Well, good morning to you and welcome into Fox 35 News Plus. I'm Garrett Weimer and thanks for joining us on this Tuesday morning live on Fox Local, Fox35Orlando.com and also on YouTube. Got a busy hour ahead of us here as we kind of begin the work week for a lot of folks after a three-day weekend. I hope it was restful for you and obviously observing an important holiday in our country as we commemorate those who gave their lives in service of our freedoms that we celebrate every day. I want to let you know a little bit of what we have coming up later in the show here today. The University of Florida Board of Trustees meeting right now and voting on a new president. The current candidate, the sole finalist that was announced in that. Got some mixed reaction from the, from folks, including political leaders here in Florida. So he spoke at that meeting just a few minutes ago. We'll take you inside that meeting in just a little bit so you can hear from him. We're also going to speak here shortly with the first black astronaut to spacewalk being inducted into the Astronaut Hall of Fame this weekend. Looking forward to speaking with Dr. Bernard Harris Jr. coming up in just a few minutes as well. But we begin this morning with an update any minute now on the Deland Bar shooting over the weekend. In fact, it looks like police walking up to the podium right now. Let's go ahead and listen in as police give an update on the shooting at McCabe's Bar.
Thanks for coming out. We want to release a statement referenced the shooting at McCabe's Bar on Saturday, early morning Saturday, May 24th. I'm Chief Jason Umberger, Deland Police. Captain Prudence Dice is, commands our investigative bureau. To his left is Sergeant Jason Florians from our Criminal Investigation Division. He's actually our acting lieutenant there. And then Deputy Chief Adam Kissart's with me as well. So I'll just kind of go over the shooting on early morning for you. Give you a general statement about that, what we've done thus far with that. And then maybe some additional comments about public safety and some steps that we're taking to try to ensure that this doesn't happen again. So as you all know, early morning hours of May 24th at about 2:05 a.m., our patrol officers responded along with the Volusia County Sheriff's Office to reports of a shooting at McCabe's Bar located here in Deland. Upon arrival, our officers located a nine-millimeter shell casing and observed a bullet hole in the exterior wall of the establishment. No injuries were reported, thankfully. Our Criminal Investigation Division responded immediately and they began interviews with witnesses and the victim. Through that course of that investigation, the suspect was identified as Calvin Roosevelt Gilbert, a 55-year-old male and regular customer at that bar. According to witness accounts, the victim and Gilbert had been drinking inside the bar, although they did not know each other previously. They got into an argument around closing time and Gilbert demanded repayment for a beer that the victim had bought, or that he had bought the victim and for about $5. And an argument escalated outside in the real parking lot. And surveillance footage and witness statements confirm that Gilbert, standing about 40 feet away, approached the victim, removed a black handgun from his satchel and fired a single shot at close range, approximately three feet from the victim's head. The victim managed to duck and avoid being hit. The bullet hit an exterior cooler, penetrated the wall, entered an occupied area of the building, and then Gilbert fled on foot. To the front of the bar, he entered a 1999 Nissan Quest van, which is registered to him, drove northbound on North Amelia Avenue. This entire sequence of events was captured on the business's security cameras. An extensive search was launched for him and the suspect's vehicle was entered into various databases as a felony vehicle that police were interested in. On Sunday morning, May 25th, at about 11:52 a.m., our detectives received information that Gilbert was in the Daytona Beach area. Surveillance teams observed him traveling westbound on ISP back toward Deland accompanied by his girlfriend with assistance from the Volusia County Sheriff's Office Air One. Gilbert was taken into custody without incident. He declined to speak with detectives and invoked his right to legal counsel. He was arrested subsequently and he's charged with attempted first-degree murder using a firearm while under the influence of alcohol. Following his arrest, a search warrant was executed at his residence located at 2469 West Orange Avenue. During the search, detectives recovered multiple firearms, including what we believe is the weapon used in the shooting. His vehicle was also recovered. We're currently working with the state attorney's office to pursue any additional charges, including shooting into an occupied dwelling. I want to thank the detectives and Acting Lieutenant Florians for his work and his detectives' hard work. They worked around the clock and within 34 hours, we had this individual in custody. It's an outstanding job by them. Want to thank our partners with the Volusia County Sheriff's Office as well that assisted us. It was a complete team effort. Very proud of the work that they did to get this person into custody in such a short amount of time. We also want to extend our appreciation to people in our community and to witnesses who cooperated fully with us and they helped bring the suspect into custody very quickly without any further danger to the public. I do want to comment that I've been in touch with the attorney for the landowner, the property owner that owns that strip. And these individuals that run McCabe's Bar have already been served with a notice of violation of lease and they are going to be required to change their hours of operation, I'm being told. I also suggested to them that they hire security, bonded security, and screen everybody coming in to the bar for firearms for the foreseeable future. They have been very cooperative with us and I believe that they will follow through with that. We have also, from a regulatory oversight, we contacted the Florida Department of Business and Professional Regulations. They've been notified since, you all know, this is the second incident we've had at McCabe's Bar in about a month. And they will be reviewing McCabe's liquor license in light of these incidents. I want to reinforce our primary concern is public safety. We are always working to maintain a safe environment for our residents, visitors, and our business owners. We realize that people are concerned about these two incidents at McCabe's Bar. We are too. We take it very seriously. I want to also reiterate that this incident is not at all related to the, to the first incident. There's no correlation between the two of those incidents. You know, at the end of the day, gun violence is a very complex issue and we're going to do everything in our power to prevent violence and hold offenders accountable. Individuals who choose to unlawfully carry and use these firearms are ultimately responsible for their actions. And we will arrest them, use every tool at our disposal to arrest them and bring them to justice, as you see, we did within 34 hours in this instance. And that, that couldn't have occurred without outstanding police work that was done. I want to reiterate that our people did outstanding job, an outstanding job. I think that concludes what I have to say. Does anybody have any questions?
We've heard, obviously rumors from people in the community that there are, there's drug activity at this bar. Is that, do you guys have reports of drug dealing going on there?
I don't believe we've had any independent reports of that occurring prior to this event. I don't know if they've received any information since then, but to my knowledge, no.
And we had these two incidents this month, but could you talk about before this month? How often were you, or any time you were responding to this establishment? Or did this just become a problem?
As far as I know, we haven't had any issues at McCabe's Bar. I've been chief of police here for eight years. It's the first time that that name has ever been brought to my attention. It was at homicide and then, of course, this incident. So I, I did not do any research or, you know, on any calls that we may have received around that bar, but to my knowledge, no. This is the first two incidents. Of course, they're serious incidents and they're cause for concern, but that we've had there.
If you could give reaction, I know when we saw that this, you know, allegedly happened over an argument about a $5 drink and that it escalated to this point when this report came across your desk, your reaction to these circumstances?
Again, I don't understand people's proclivity for, for, first of all, carrying firearms into a bar is illegal in the state of Florida. And solving arguments with firearms is not the answer, obviously. Whatever their dispute was over this $5 drink, it's just ridiculous to think that it ended up in a person nearly losing their life over, over something so, so ridiculous. There's no, there's no reason for that. There's, other than each individual's personal actions. And like I said, when people break the law, we're going to be there and we're going to address it appropriately. We're going to take every, all steps that we can to, and we have ongoing patrols. We have a special enforcement team that's been out since the homicide that's been working extra details in evenings along with our partners with Volusia County Sheriff's Office to try to interdict as many illegal firearms that are being carried throughout our city as possible. We've, we've had some good success in the last month arresting numerous offenders, taking some firearms off the street that were being illegally carried, and we're going to continue to do that. We're going to continue to make the land a safe place to live. We believe it's a safe place to live and we're going to continue to work hard to continue to make it safe.
Do you guys have like, someone like at the bar overnight or something like that? Like just stationed there?
Do we have, no, we do not have anybody there. Of course, since we've had these incidents, our patrol supervisors, I'm sure, are deploying people in and around that area to make sure that, you know, that bar is as safe as it can be.
And I think we all kind of know the answer to this, but you said that you're requiring them to change the hours of operation. What, what would that do or kind of how would that help?
Well, we aren't requiring that. The, the owners of the bar, they have a lease, you know, an agreement with the management of McCabe's Bar. And I'm being told they're in violation of some of these parts of the lease and the ownership is going to demand that the hours of operation change. And what I was told was, right now McCabe's operates till 2:00 in the morning. They're going to scale that back and make them close at 10:00 or 11:00 in the evening, is what I was told.
Was the gun legal and was he even allowed to have a firearm?
That's a good question.
So right now, the gun is being tested for, for forensics. Well, once we establish that information about the weapon, we will, but I can tell you, he was prior military. So he was, based on our information, he was allowed to have the weapon.
Deland Police giving an update on this shooting at McCabe's Bar over the weekend. You heard police describe the suspect being three feet from the victim's head when he fired, the victim able to duck and avoid being shot in that incident stemming from an argument over a repayment of a $5 beer, as you heard Deland Police talk about. You also heard them talk about some changes that are going to be implemented. As we noted, this is the second shooting there just in the past few weeks. And so it sounds like the owners of that property going to make the operators of the bar change their hours of operation, likely close at 10:00 or 11:00 instead of 2:00 o'clock in the morning. Police also recommended that they hire a security and screen customers for firearms. The police also noted that the state is going to be reviewing the liquor license of that establishment as well. That news conference is, has wrapped up. They're walking away from the podium right now. We are going to take a break here on Fox 35 News Plus, but we'll be right back after this.
You're watching Fox 35 News Plus streaming on Fox Local.
History coming up this weekend at the Astronaut Hall of Fame at Kennedy Space Center when the first black astronaut to spacewalk is going to be inducted into that Astronaut Hall of Fame. You are looking at Dr. Bernard Harris Jr., who has logged hours and hours, traveled more than 7.2 million miles in space. And joining us live now via Zoom is Dr. Bernard Harris Jr. And Dr. Harris, we really appreciate you joining us this morning here on Fox 35 News Plus.
Good morning, Garrett. How are you?
I'm doing fine, thank you. And I appreciate you joining us. I'm really excited to talk with you. First, want to get your thoughts. We showed a couple of those, those photographs. When you look back at that, what, what comes to mind?
Oh, wow. It brings back the, the early training and preparation for the, the missions and then also the mission itself. I think one of those photos showed me in an EVA suit, extravehicular activity suit. That's a spacewalk suit. And boy, does that bring back memories.
I would imagine so. So talk to us about how you became inspired, first of all, to be an astronaut.
Well, I've been fascinated with science and science fiction since I was a kid. And when I was 13 years old in 1969, I know it, that means I'm old. I saw Neil Armstrong and Buzz Aldrin land on the moon and I was hooked. I wanted to follow in their footsteps.
And so talk to us a little bit about your career. 438 hours, traveled more than 7.2 million miles in space. That's a lot, Dr. Harris.
It is at the time, but it pales in comparison to what the guys are doing, guys and gals are doing now on the International Space Station. But I had to decide when I went to college what major I would go into that would allow me to apply to the astronautic board. And I decided to become a medical doctor because I found out that there were medical doctors that were going to be needed for spaceflight, especially for long-duration spaceflight, what we're doing now. And anticipating, you know, what's happening in terms of us being in low Earth orbit and then going to the moon and Mars, we are certainly, will be in need.
You became the first African-American to perform a spacewalk. What did that mean to you?
It was very special, you know, as an astronaut candidate going through basic training, you know, you're just dying to get your first flight. And then on top of that, you know, you do the all activities that are necessary for each mission. But the pinnacle of being an astronaut is actually donning that suit and getting outside. I should say one of the pinnacle because some of my guys who haven't done spacewalk would probably argue with me, but it's, being an astronaut is incredible. And this notion of being outside and having that God's eye view of the earth is just incredible.
Yeah, take us through what it is like being out there. I would imagine it is incredible and also it has to, in some ways, be frightening.
In some ways it is. There's a lot of preparation that goes into a spacewalk. We first have to get into our suits early on, a few hours before the actual walk. We have to do a pre-breathe to prevent decompression sickness when we go out to, from high pressure to low pressure. And so once you were done with all of that and you open up the hatch, I remember looking down on the earth as we were cruising by at 17,500 miles an hour. It gets your attention. And so that first step was, of course, a doozy as you're stepping out of the airlock. But once we got out, we hooked on with our lines and we were able to be secure with the ship and do the activities that were necessary for, for the mission.
You, you talked about the expansion of kind of the space industry now. And what would your message be and what is your message to, to kids who may be interested in, in becoming an astronaut, just like you were?
Yeah, I'm glad that you asked that question because we are in the 21st century where technology is driving everything that we do. And now the step, the steps that we're making in low Earth orbit, where we will have manufacturing facilities in low Earth orbit, that's 250 miles above the earth. And above that, of course, there'll be all sorts of activities between here and the moon and there will be colonies. In fact, a number of nations have announced that they're going to put colonies on, on the moon. And that's going to change not only what's happening in space in terms of technology and innovation, but it's going to impact here, us here on earth. So our kids have to be prepared for that. And you know that moniker STEM education or STEAM education is going to be key to our kids' future.
After your career as an astronaut, you founded the Harris Foundation. Could you talk to us about some of the work that the foundation does and why that means so much to you?
Yeah, I've been involved in math and science education for over 30 years now, primarily because of what I just talked about, the future, you know? The future of this country, the economic prosperity lies in the innovation. And innovation comes from knowledgeable people. So we have spent, you know, over 30 years having programs all over the nation, including Florida, where we had the Summer Science Camp, Bernard Harris Summer Science Camp there for middle school kids. But we have programming and we do scholarships around the nation in order to promote STEM education and it's important for ensuring our future.
And, and you know, that's an important step because we know those opportunities in space you talked about are going to be there. And so now it's taking advantage of that and making sure that, that we have the folks to fill those important roles.
Yeah, and those roles are going to be high-paying jobs. So when you think about the different communities that are around the nation, it is important that we understand that those STEM jobs are some of the highest-paying jobs out there. So if your goal is to be able to take care of yourself and your family, that is the way to do it.
Being inducted this weekend into the Astronaut Hall of Fame, Dr. Harris, when you found out about that, what was your reaction?
I was very excited. There have been, you know, a portion of the astronauts who've gone in space who've actually been inducted into the Astronaut Hall of Fame. So I'm very honored and I like to say very blessed to be selected to join this illustrious group. And I'm looking forward to the ceremony on Saturday there in Cape Canaveral in Kennedy Space Flight Center.
It's probably not something that ever crosses your mind as a possibility as you're going about your day-to-day career.
I'm not sure if I understood that question, but the, but the notion of being selected?
Yeah, I mean, when you, as you, as you are working as a, as an astronaut, it's probably not something that ever even crosses your mind that one day I'm going to be inducted into the Astronaut Hall of Fame. So that has to be pretty cool.
Exactly right. You know, it's not like you start your training program saying, I'm doing this so I can be inducted to the Astronaut Hall of Fame. No, you're doing it, or I did it, because I was fulfilling a childhood dream. And my dream was to make a significant contribution to the advancement of the space program. And I think that I have done that. And so I get a lot of gratification in that. And the Astronaut Hall of Fame is icing on the cake for me.
Now, I also, before I let you go, you know, we've talked about a lot of these, your experiences in space, but there are also greater life lessons in that. And I know you recently wrote a book that, that kind of highlights some of that. If you wouldn't mind telling us a little bit about that as well.
Yeah, so I, I wrote my, I wrote my first book called Dreamwalker about 10 years ago. And the last couple of chapters, I talked about the power within. I'm all about inspiring people to reach their aspirations. So what I did is I took that chapter and expanded it in this new book called Embracing Infinite Possibilities to help folks find out, you know, find who they are, you know, because a lot of us are lost in this world. A lot of us know what we want to do, but don't have the skill set to do it. And so this book tries to enable them, using sort of my life lessons or some of the issues that you have when you're going after a particular goal. And one of the things, the subtitle is, is overcoming fear to reach your highest potential. And I put that in there because a lot of times we will come up against obstacles or we will fail and we will think that's the end. It's not the end. Failure is only the beginning of ultimate success if you have the stick-to-itiveness that's necessary to move forward. And that's what the book is, is all about.
Dr. Bernard Harris Jr., former astronaut and incoming Astronaut Hall of Famer. Congratulations on that honor, that ceremony coming up on Saturday at the Astronaut Hall of Fame at Kennedy Space Center. And we really appreciate you taking the time to speak with us this morning here on Fox 35 News Plus.
My pleasure.
We're going to take a break and we'll be right back after this. Welcome back into Fox 35 News Plus. This is Dr. Santa Ono, who is the sole finalist in the open position of president at the University of Florida. He's speaking right now in front of the Board of Trustees who's meeting today to vote on whether or not to move forward with him as the new president. Now, he was the former president at the University of Michigan in Ann Arbor. He has faced some pushback though, including from Senator Rick Scott over his support of DEI policies at U Michigan. That's been a large topic of conversation with Dr. Ono talking about that and just in the last few minutes, saying that he felt like DEI had some, some good intentions, but it didn't necessarily work the way they wanted it to in Michigan. And so that was why they began to scale those policies back. We have you live inside this Board of Trustees meeting right now. Let's go ahead and listen in as this, this conversation continues ahead of the vote.
And ask you chronologically to be specific on when your thinking changed. Was it prior to, during, or after the, the official public launch of the UF Presidential Search?
It was long before the launch of the Presidential Search. A few, I think
If you, I think Rahul sort of summarized what was happening in January and February and March. We started the conversations in late 2023 with the Regents and the leadership team. The decision to think about the impact of diversity statements occurred in the summer of 2024. So, at UF, all decisions were made in March of 2024. Few months later, the University of Michigan, having had conversations already, struck a committee, the provost struck a committee to, to have conversations with faculty across the institution to ask, "Are diversity statements good or not? Do they have a purpose or might they actually have unintended negative consequences in terms of hiring with respect to merit and making good choices?" And so, that decision, that conversation started in summer of '24, a few months after DEI was closed at UF. The decision to actually stop using DEI statements occurred in November of '24. So, the same year as UF's decisions. And then, the decision, discussion, significant discussion to actually close DEI offices to sunset the program, all that was happening in January of December, January of '23, 2024, '25. And the, as you, as you heard, the initial conversation just about the prospect of University of Florida to, with me only occurred in, in mid to late February. And I think that I became a formal candidate only in April of 2025. So, everything was done by, by the time I had become a candidate for, a formal candidate for the presidency.
Thank you. Is there any other follow-up? Trustee call.
Mr. Chair, Dr. Ono, I'm going to drill in a little bit more to this again because it's important, because it's also an area that you've come under some scrutiny for. And all of us want to, want to check this one off, right, in a really clear way. So, I'm, I just want you to elaborate more on how your thinking has evolved, the role of the university president and the university as it relates to the subject of DEI. It sounds like it's evolved in a way that it is really laser-focused on merit. So, first, can you just elaborate on that and confirm? And the second one's about timing. We, we, again, because we're, we're trying to get at the core of your own operating philosophy here. So, when, when did this evolution happen? How did it happen? And was it before UF came knocking on your door?
Yeah, absolutely. Like I said, the conversations between the myself, the Regents, and the other leaders started in 2023, November or December. And the contact, first contact with me from the Presidential Search Committee didn't occur until February of 2025, so quite a long period of time. And like I said, the evolution of my thought took over a year and a half of conversations. We had many conversations with the leadership team, my leadership team, we would call it the cabinet here, and the Regents. And during that time, there was also a pretty long article published in the New York Times Magazine about the DEI program at the University of Michigan, because it had been around for quite some time since 2016. And so, if you read that article, there are a number of interviews that the author had with students and faculty and staff across the university that identified the same sorts of things that we were also hearing. A number of faculty, staff, and students would interact with me. Some of them would say, "We don't feel included in the DEI program." Some individuals said they didn't feel comfortable speaking about their view because there wasn't enough viewpoint diversity. And, and so, during the period of over a year and many, many conversations, that's how not only my view, but the view of a number of leaders at the University of Michigan changed. Certainly, it's not universally held, but I am very solid now because of witnessing what's happened, not only in Michigan, but across the landscape, that reform is needed, that although very well-intentioned, that I actually think that, that programs kind of lost their way in not focusing on student success, not ensuring that, that the dollars were really focused on supporting students directly or the faculty directly. Too much, it was focused on the bureaucracy in, in the administration. And so, it, it occurred over that period of time. And, and those are the inputs that we evaluated as well. And I was also obviously looking at what was happening across the higher education landscape and other institutions as well. And that kind of evolution of thought continues today. If you look at many institutions that have, during a period of between five and 10 years, really, really built their strategy on diversity, equity, and inclusion, those institutions are currently also evaluating their perspective and their strategy as well. So, I think it's, it's, it's not just me, I know you want to know about me, but it's, it's something that is happening across higher education. There've been some articles written in the New York Times recently about that as well. I don't know if you've read Steven Pinker's article in the New York Times, but it actually summarizes that as well. And so, hopefully that answered your question. Well before the Presidential Search contacted me, and it happened over a period of about a year and a half.
Thank you. Other follow-up, trustee Ridley.
Any? Dr. Ono, during your remarks, you mentioned the shared values here at the University of Florida. One of those was merit. I believe you may have mentioned it one or two more times during your remarks. Can you share with us your views on meritocracy and what that means to you personally?
You know, I think that if you look at federal law, for example, this has been discussed at the level of Supreme, Supreme Court with the SSFA decision versus Harvard. And basically, what they found is, is pretty aligned with my view. And that is that meritocracy really provides individuals on an even playing field. The selection and support of students that, through their hard work, through their performance in whatever venue, are really the best in terms of their merit. And that there isn't any involvement of criteria that will influence those decisions and those selections beyond merit. I think that's incredibly important, and I think that's why the Supreme Court decision changed. In, in many ways, the University of Michigan played a fundamental role in what affirmative action was for quite some period of time in the SCOTUS decisions. And the most recent decision at the federal level through the Supreme Court, through the SSFA versus Harvard decision, really, I think articulates what I view is important is that, and I, and the reason why I'm attracted to the University of Florida is that these decisions and selections are based upon merit, not based upon different kinds of equations or, or assessments that might get in the way of selecting the individual that's most deserving for admission or for promotion. And so, hopefully that answered your question. So, for me, merit is incredibly important. The other thing that really attracts me to the University of Michigan, of Florida and the state of Florida is, as I said, the, the 2022 system, the university system focused on civil discourse. That is something that's really way ahead of its game compared to many other university systems around, around the world. And that brings people with differing views and really supports the freedom of speech and expression of individuals at the institution regardless of their viewpoint. And, and that is incredibly important. The third thing that really, beyond merit, that, that I'm excited about here is the commitment to viewpoint diversity and the fact that the state system is focused on that as well.
Thank you.
Dr. Santa Ono, the sole finalist for University of Florida president, being questioned by members of the Board of Trustees. And a lot of the questions focusing on DEI and merit, you heard him talking about the evolution of his thinking, being pushed for some, some more specifics with that, talking about how he feels about merit and DEI policies as well. We're going to go ahead and take a break here on Fox 35 News Plus. Continuing to monitor that meeting, though. A vote is expected at some point today as that meeting continues. We're going to take a break and we'll be right back after this. Fox 35 Storm Team Meteorologist Brooks Garner joins me now. And Brooks, is it safe to say we are in summertime now here in Florida?
Essentially. You know, it's funny you ask. As we approach the end of May here, tomorrow being the last day of school for our area schools, June 1st is the meteorological start of summertime. It's the months of June, July, and August that are considered summer in the northern hemisphere, although the astronomical start of summer, when the earth actually tilts toward the sun at its farthest tilt, the summer solstice, that doesn't happen until June 20th. But, as far as our weather is concerned and our weather pattern, meteorologically, it officially starts June 1st, but effectively, it's here, yes. Low to mid 90s for highs, a chance for storms each afternoon. Now, there will be caveats to the forecast in days featuring higher storm chances, like one day this weekend, but yeah, this is pretty much it, Garrett. And I think a lot of us are kind of actually welcoming it, not so much the humidity, but at least the promise of rain each day, or at least the hope of rain if it doesn't happen where you are. It's been so dry all spring. Looking outside right now, we've got clouds building and temperatures rising. We're going to top out today at 93 in Orlando, about 95 in Bushnell. Now, on the coastline, do you know that 75% of Floridians live within 10 miles of the coast? Well, no exception on our coast, from Palm Coast to Melbourne to Palm Bay, we'll see temperatures in the upper 80s to low 90s, warmest west of A1A. All right, as far as the storms go, our highest chance for storms develops probably between 5:00 and 6:00 p.m. along the I-4 corridor. And it will be yet another day where the sea breeze kicks up from the Gulf side, first producing a couple of storms by 3:00 p.m. along I-75, and the Atlantic side, where the Atlantic sea breeze will set up along I-95 about the same time. Where they meet in the middle, right over Orlando, is our highest chance for rain. That's likely between about 5:00 and 7:00 p.m. And we could have a couple of stronger storms with wind gusts exceeding 50 miles per hour as well as some hail. Yesterday, we had a couple of funnel clouds, even a waterspout briefly in the, the Waterford Lakes area in Orange County. Kind of amazing to see that, just minor damage, but still, it just shows you the potential. Sometimes the sea breeze can get the atmosphere spinning and kick up a couple of brief and weak tornadoes. Now, we've seen that this morning across the Baton Rouge area of Louisiana. The cold front producing that severe weather is going to come here on Saturday. Now, until then, we've got this short work week. Again, tomorrow's the last day of school, and that front's going to stay stalled to our north. But eventually, it will work toward our region. Before that, it'll be preceded with some afternoon storms, thanks to the sea breeze for tomorrow, Thursday, and Friday. And then, on Saturday, look at that. Yeah, there's potential here as this front comes in that we'll see a blossoming of widespread downpour. So, if you live in an area that hasn't seen much rain, like Dunellen, for instance, in western Marion County, west of Ocala, folks there complaining they haven't seen much, while areas farther inland have had a whole boatload of rain over the last week, you've got a pretty decent chance on Saturday. Now, the timing is still up in the air. Does it happen Saturday morning? Does it happen Saturday evening? We'll, we'll know as we get closer to it. If it happens later in the day on Saturday, those storms could be stronger, by the way, or severe. Looks like we'll get a break in the action Sunday before it comes back our way as a warm front for the week to follow and more rain. It's hard for cold fronts to make much, much of a injury into Florida at this point in the year. It's just too hot. It's too strong for cold fronts to do much of anything. Daytona Beach, a nice shot there at your beach forecast. Let's talk about the beach forecast. Waves of one to two feet, water temperature about 79 degrees, a little cooler as the tide comes in, you can feel it. 88 degrees will be the air temperature, about a 50/50 chance for rain, a moderate risk for rip currents. So, it's always best to swim near a lifeguard, especially with the little ones. By the way, it's that time of year that the African dust is coming, the Saharan air layer. This is from huge windstorms over the Sahara Desert, can kick up that desert dust, lofting it up between 5,000 and 15,000 feet. Then it gets picked up by the trade winds and sent straight across the ocean. Happens every late spring into the summertime, and it's happening right now. In fact, it's so thick around St. Lucia in the Caribbean that skies there are noticeably hazy with visibility reduced to below five miles. It takes away that beautiful blue Caribbean sky and makes it kind of a milky gray cast. And we're going to see that coming our way for next week. Other things you can do is actually impact your health negatively if you have chronic respiratory issues, you know, asthma, COPD, the whole gambit of issues. It may make, make you feel a little bit, you're sort of more irritated. So, it's, it's microscopic dust particles. They're called particulates in the world of air quality, and we're going to see higher levels of those dust particles. Really gritty and grimy, real microscopic, they can get real deep into your lungs. I mean, you don't have to stay inside if you're a healthy person, but if you are not as lucky and don't have your health, it's best to try and avoid it, especially when it gets a little bit thicker as we head into the middle of next week. In fact, if this verifies this dark brown over our area, our skies are going to look gray as if it's cloudy all day, even though it may be totally sunny. Now, the other thing the dust does is it inhibits the development of tropical activity. So, if you have like a developing tropical storm, if the dust gets sucked into that thing, it dries it out like a big, like washcloth or maybe a towel, like if you have a spill on the ground or paper towel on the, on the tabletop, you know, those tropical storms need humidity to survive. And, and this basically transports a characteristic of the Sahara Desert wherever it's going. So, in this case, at about 5,000 feet, the air is hot and dry, and it just inhibits any kind of development of thunderstorm activity or tropical weather. And so, this could actually dry us out a little bit for the middle of next week. If storms do break through the inversion it creates, they can be severe with damaging wind gusts. So, interesting setup there with the Saharan dust and a sure sign of the summer season ahead. All right, let's talk seven-day forecast. 93 today, 92 tomorrow, 92 on Thursday. And looking ahead to the weekend, remember, we've got that cold front coming on Saturday, and that means we'll have a likely chance for rain at 70%. It's too soon to time it out, but that's going to be our highest rain chance beyond just the typical likelihood of afternoon showers and storms. Sunday is June 1st. June 1st is the start of the hurricane season. So far, so good. No threats out there at this time. So, Garrett, it's a really interesting setup. We've got our, our summertime pattern, our thunderstorms, and now tracking dust plumes from the Sahara Desert. That's pretty wild, isn't it?
It's, it's a lot. It is at that time of year, though. And like you talked about, the start of hurricane season coming up on Sunday. We know the Fox 35 Storm Team just did that excellent hurricane preview special. And if, if anyone missed that, they can, they can still watch that right now on Fox Local.
Yeah, and Garrett, I've also got a bonus weather story related to that that did not air during that Fox 35 hurricane special, but if you want to see it, of course, Fox Local has it there. But if you go to my Facebook page, it's facebook.com/BrooksTV, I've got it right there, and there are money-saving tips. So, you know, as you prepare, you may not have to break the bank. You may have a lot of the stuff already, and if you don't, just a couple of smart purchases may get you going and save you money, not just this season, but for future seasons. So, again, it's facebook.com/BrooksTV. That's my, my plug of the day, Garrett.
A lot of good information there. Fox 35 Storm Team Meteorologist Brooks Garner, we appreciate you joining us.
Thanks so much, Garrett. Always, always a pleasure.
And as we go to break here on Fox 35 News Plus, leave you with a, a live look at downtown Orlando, and you see some of those clouds hanging over downtown Orlando and Lake Geola on this Tuesday morning. We're going to step aside for a couple of minutes, but we'll be right back.
You're watching Fox 35 News Plus, streaming on Fox Local.
Welcome back into Fox 35 News Plus. I'm Garrett Weimer, and thanks for joining us on this Tuesday morning, live on Fox Local, fox35orlando.com, and also on YouTube. The Florida Panthers last night lost game four to the Carolina Hurricanes in the Eastern Conference Finals in the NHL's Stanley Cup Playoffs. It was the first time in a while that the Panthers haven't scored five or six goals, and they were shut out last night, ended up losing that one. But they have a chance to clinch it with a win tomorrow night. We heard from some Panthers players and the head coach talking about what they need to do to close out that series.
You know, it's, it's what to expect. Um, you know, when you're, when you're down, you lay everything on the line, you've got nothing to lose, and you know, they played a good game. We didn't have our best tonight, but you know, we're still in a good position.
What do you think was missing?
Uh, I think just a little jump. I think we were a little hesitant tonight. Um, the last three games, we were, we were aggressive. We had more, more pace to our game, more jump, and I think just a little, little, sitting back a little bit tonight.
How'd you get back to, how'd you get back to having that jump and getting, playing your game?
I mean, that's, that's our game. Um, you know, tonight wasn't our game. We, you know, we sat back, but you know, that's not, that's not the norm for us, so I'm sure we'll have a, you know, it's a, it's a pretty easy fix to, to turn that around.
Sam, there were a lot of chances, obviously, you guys were either have some early, have some late, just weird things. How frustrating is it when those things accumulate over the course of the year?
Yeah, I don't, it's not frustrating. I mean, it's, it's hockey. Um, that's the way it goes sometimes. Sometimes you get bounces, sometimes you don't. Um, you know, tonight, we didn't get that many bounces, but we also didn't play our best. So, um, you know, I don't think we, we deserved the bounces tonight.
Is that about what you expected from them in terms of desperation and effort, especially early, just how they came out?
Yeah, for sure. Um, you know, they, they played a hard game. They, they came out like they had nothing to lose, and, um, you know, we, we sat back a bit, so, um, yeah. We, uh, yeah, they, they came out hard.
Did you see the power play?
On our power play?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't good.
Same like the rest of your game, or?
It's just, we, I think we were, again, we were a little slow. Um, not as, not as urgent with the puck, not as quick puck movement, and, uh, again, it's an easy fix. We've, we've been a lot better, so, um, you know, not, not too worried about that.
Sam, what can you say about what Bob did in that to keep you guys in the game? I mean, it was only 1-0 throughout until they got the couple on the others?
Yeah, it was huge. He gave us a chance the whole, the whole way. Um, and that's all you can ask for is, especially when, when, you know, you have a game like that, to still have a chance right, right to the very end is, is huge. So, you know, again, he played, he played on purpose.
You guys have done well this, you guys have done well this year, or in the playoffs, you know, when one guy's out, when Evans down, or Ekblad's out. Obviously, tonight is to replace multiple guys. How difficult is it when multiple guys are able to wind up?
Yeah, it's, it's tough. I mean, we had some, some key guys out, but, uh, you know, we're, we're a really deep team, so we have tons of guys that are capable of playing and capable of playing big games, so, um, you know, not, not too worried about that.
Sam, now, you guys are still in control of this area. You know, what are you looking forward to for game five?
I think it's just another opportunity to, uh, you know, get back to our game, um, which is, which is great because, you know, that, that wasn't, uh, that wasn't, uh, our style of game tonight. We were a little slow, so it's just another opportunity to, to, to play the game, and I'm sure we're going to come out a lot, a lot better.
I don't think that way. They just, they played a good game, and, uh, yeah, that's it. It was, it was a tight game. It was basically one-goal game, so, yeah, they had a good game.
Do you guys lack a little urgency or was it just?
Yeah, we could, we could play better, too, obviously, but yeah, again, it is what it is. It's the playoffs, you know? They have a good team, too, and, uh, yeah, it's just compete, and, uh, we, again, it's serious, and we're getting ready for next game.
So that was some of what the players had to say after a game four loss to the Carolina Hurricanes, but again, uh, the game five coming up tomorrow night in North Carolina. Well, that's going to do it for us here on Fox 35 News Plus, but I want to let you know some of what we have coming up later. So this afternoon, 1 o'clock, Governor Ron DeSantis scheduled to be in Apopka. We will have a crew there. We will stream that live for you right here on Fox Local. We will also be back at 2 o'clock with Florida Live. Now, I want to let you know that this meeting, the UF Board of Trustees meeting, still going on right now. That's Dr. Santa Ono, the finalist, the sole finalist in their presidential search. Been a lot of talk about DEI, a number of other things in this board meeting today. We will go ahead and continue to stream that for you here on Fox Local while it continues. Some interesting topics of conversation. We also do expect a vote shortly on this, so we are going to step aside and take a break here in just a minute. Um, and then when we do, it'll come back right at noon, and we'll continue listening in on this meeting. Again, this is the University of Florida Board of Trustees meeting as they speak with Dr. Santa Ono, who was the former president at the University of Michigan, has faced some pushback over DEI policies at the U-Michigan, and he's been questioned about that quite a bit this morning as we get, as we head into the afternoon. Questioned about his support and when his thinking changed, when he decided to walk some of those policies back. So again, we're going to take a break here on Fox 35.
...for the university. So that'll be one of the early things that I do, is work with the university community, with the cabinet to start to define that vision. I gave kind of very high-level, six areas that I thought any great university needs to focus on, but we're going to co-create that. It's not going to come from me. We may put those six areas out and might even use AI to, to actually mine the entire community, and that's faculty, staff, and students and alumni, stakeholders, the university system of Florida. We got, they have their own strategy. We want to dovetail with that. They've spent a lot of time on it. And so thinking about how to go about that, the process, so that it doesn't take too long, but that we actually really benefit from the collective wisdom of the university community will be an early priority of mine. But in the first 100 days, you know, I want to get to know people, want to spend some time with you, want to spend time with faculty, I want to go to HLL, I want to visit different institutes, I want to go to Scripps. There's so many things to do. I don't think I can possibly do it in 100 days, but I'm going to start doing that and prioritize it with my team. Um, and I want to make sure those searches are concluded, or they initiate, so that we can have a permanent cabinet and a permanent set of deans. The students and faculty deserve that. We need to be firing on all cylinders, and that requires decisions that have been on hold for some time, and so I'm excited about doing that. I think the sky's the limit of what we can do, and I already have, believe it or not, in my mind and on paper, sort of what I would do in the first 100 days, what I would do in the first year, um, and I can't wait to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to our faculty representative, but let me just make a couple of comments there, and maybe I can get a commitment from our president. While I'm at it, you know, I get all these commitments, so later on, I can show it to him. When, um, when I joined Board of Trustees here, the very first year, uh, the president came to me and President Fox, and he says that unfortunately, we don't have the money to give any raises to our faculty, and for that reason, because he had an automatic increase in his salary, his own salary, he says, "I don't want any raises, because my faculty not going to get raises, I'm not going to get a raise." I said to him, "Okay, this is my first year here, but never again, Dr. Fox, come to me and say our faculty will not get raises, and I'm not going to get a raise. Our faculty need to get raises." After that, never again, that any year went by that our faculty did not get a raise, including this last year was, was the highest raise in the last 15, 20 years. We still, if you look at our top 10 universities, especially top five, if you look at the closest university to us, we're about $15,000, $18,000 below closest university to us. Now, if you look at the number one university in the country, they're $100,000 by the way. I don't think we're going to get there, and plus, if you live in California, the cost of living is so much higher. But if you look at the closest one to us, like Nesta, North Carolina, again, we are $15,000, $18,000, $20,000. Uh, and, and so I, I want to see if I can get a commitment from you to protect our faculty and give them the raises that do, but more importantly, hold our faculty accountable for their work, and if they're doing a good job, pay them more. You know, give bonuses, you know, that, we have a plan in place. When we do our post-ten-year review, the people at the top this last year, we give every one of them $10,000 raise. Would you, A, protect our professors, and make sure through savings, through savings, and through getting rid of all the, you know, all the expenses that shouldn't be there, and, and try to save money to give our faculty, based on merit, purely based on merit, give them the raises they deserve, try to get us to be a top-five university, because one thing is holding us back, that we have not on the top-five university. If you look at the ranking, US World News, one of them is faculty. So protect our faculty, give them their raise, and more importantly, hold them accountable on what they do, um, and, and review all the post-ten-year. We want to make sure the post-ten-year is, is gone vigorously, and those faculty, they're doing an amazing job, give them the bonuses that do.
So the answer is, I think that what has been established at Florida is a model. There are, uh, in certain institutions like the University of Toronto Health System, and, and at Harvard and Johns Hopkins, there are similar kinds of models where it's performance-based. It's based upon a true and fair evaluation of productivity. I certainly believe that rewarding those who are doing very high-quality work is essential, because you need to retain them, because they're, they are a poaching risk by other institutions. And, uh, so I think it's just the, the right thing to do to support individuals based upon a fair assessment of their merit. There are many different things a faculty member can do, and I'll just say straight out, the faculty are the heart of the institution, and so, um, the, the strength of the university really comes from the strength of the faculty. And so I'm fully on board with, yes, I would do everything I can to, to address any kind of salary differential, especially with the universities that we're competing with. Absolutely. The other thing I would do, which is one of the amazing strategic moves of the whole university system of Florida, is affordability for students. Uh, you know, number one in the country. And if you look at the kinds of, of scholarships that are provided for high-ability students, the cost of a quality education like the University of Florida is astonishing. I don't think any public university or private comes close to what the value of a UF degree for our students. So those are two bedrock commitments from me to answer your question. And so, yes, I would do everything I can to ensure that faculty are rewarded, not only for publications, but the whole portfolio of what you evaluate. Great teachers are also important as well. So I'd work with the provost of the university and the deans to really talk that through, but yes, the faculty have to be supported.
Would you also hold them accountable that part of our post-ten-year review, which is a law, post-ten-year review, to make sure that that plan vigorously followed, and, and holding the faculty that not beneficial, you know, and hold them accountable?
Well, that's the way it worked. From a, from a business perspective, that's how it works, is that if you look at, um, the institutions that are highest performing, they either incredibly selective in who they hire, or they promote, or tenure, or they have some sort of, uh, post-tenure review. And if you actually look at resources within a consolidated budget, you can even create, create analytics to look at every department, every, with, with the dot being for every faculty member, where you can look at teaching contributions and research contributions. And you'll see at any institution, even the highest rank, that you'll have some who are not performing, and others that are really carrying the entire institution in terms of its scholarship, and its research excellence, and its teaching excellence. And so those people need to be rewarded, but a lot of money is going to some fraction of, of underperformers. You need to give those individuals an opportunity to address underperformance, right? Because we've invested in them. And so that kind of feedback mechanism is important, but the only way you can actually financially contribute to those who are overperforming is to find the resources and to correct for any imbalance between the workload of one faculty member versus another.
And now I'm going to go to trustee Lynn.
Thank you. As you mentioned in your comments, faculty are the heart of any top university. I have a two-part question related to strategies and supports for faculty. The first is, what strategies would you use to help attract world-class faculty to the University of Florida, as well as develop and retain the world-class faculty that we have here already across UF's many disciplines? That's my first question. The second is, how would you support faculty research and teaching excellence and interdisciplinary collaboration?
So those are all outstanding questions, and, you know, if you actually look, I tracked University of Florida versus other public universities over the past 15 years. And what I said when I was named as a sole finalist is that UF is like a rocket ship. If you can see certain inflection points in the total research dollars, the impact factor of different public universities. And I got to give credit to Kent Fox for, and, and this board for, you know, this, the huge investment in attracting 600 faculty to the university, in the bold acquisition of Scripps UF. And that's faculty adding to the professoriate. It's part of the rankings is the student-faculty ratio. It's part of the rankings is the student-faculty ratio, and getting the highest-quality faculty. So, attracting faculty in those magnitudes are the reason why I believe UF can become the best public university. We got to do what Kent did, we got to do it again, got to figure out a way to do it. And how do you attract them? Got to tell the story. The story at University of Florida is exciting. I will personally articulate the story. People are probably listening to it right now, that this is the place to come. It's, in my view, one of the most consequential, if not the most consequential university, public university right now. That's going to attract people, it's already happening. Scores of faculty are joining Florida, because they know this state, the legislature, the governor are investing in this university double or triple more than other states are investing in their flagship institutions. That's an exciting story. The facilities, the investments in capital expenditures in this university are, people are noticing. These are state-of-the-art facilities of where they want to work, where they want to rub shoulders with faculty from different schools and disciplines, where the students from different schools can come together in an interdisciplinary way. So, Florida has to continue telling the story, it has to continue to attract the best and brightest. They're going to be attracted by the outstanding students that University of Florida accepts. In terms of retaining, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about interdisciplinarity in a second, try to remember all aspects of your question. In terms of retaining faculty, it's really important to, if you're a chairman, or a dean, or a president, to identify those stars early. Don't talk to them after UNC or UVA comes knocking. Talk to them early, promote them early, make them know that they're loved, make them know that there's no better place for them than UF. So, retention is going to require money, because, you know, you're going to want to proactively invest in their scholarship and their research, that takes money. And you'll have to work with the vice president of research and innovation, the provost and the deans, to figure out a evidenced way, data-driven way, to use some of that resource, part of the 1.5 billion-dollar research endowment, it's now 1.3 billion, how to use that and to spin off from it in a very strategic way, to invest proactively in those people that have their trajectory. We don't want them to leave, we want them to stay here at Florida. In terms of interdisciplinarity, I hope that at the end of the strategic planning process, we'll set aside some resource, so that faculty can find somebody else, have to be one or two other people from a different school. And they have to, through a very similar kind of review process that occurs in agencies, with external review, identify the most promising interdisciplinary teaching, research, and scholarship projects, not just bench research, exciting teaching as well, new pedagogy. All of that makes for a great university. And we need to set aside resource and embed it into our strategic plan, which should be ten years, just like Kent's was, to really ensure that we move the needle with respect to the quality of our faculty, to empower them to work at the boundaries of disciplines, which are often the most exciting areas of any institution.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Trustee Power.
Thank you. Academic medical centers have been viewed as the nucleus and the heart of the US health system, but we face tremendous challenges now, including funding.
Please share how you would work with UF Health leadership to make sure it not only survives, but it thrives.
Thank you so much. Well, I'd have to form a partnership with you, that's for sure. We've talked about that. I think one of the things I bring is the fact that all of my faculty appointments have been in academic health centers. I was an assistant professor at Johns Hopkins as it was growing. I was a faculty member at Harvard Medical School, as you know. But from a leadership perspective, I would say that my direct involvement in ensuring that the academic health center survives first occurred at the University of Cincinnati. And if you follow academic health centers, that's an academic health center with a first-class pediatric hospital. Cincinnati Children's Hospital is one of the best in the world, has an adult hospital that was in a competitive market with other health systems. And really required for us on a regular basis at the board level to have a strategy, through member substitution, looking at metrics in terms of morbidity, looking at wait times in hospitals, looking at all the kinds of metrics that you and I think about. And so, I cut my teeth in thinking about the academic health center at the University of Cincinnati. And University of British Columbia has a province-wide health system. Even though the hospitals aren't owned by the university, as is the case here, at the University of Michigan, it was nevertheless a very large organizational structure that involved not systems, but what we called health authorities. And we had to figure out the funds flow between the hospitals and the schools, the health schools, that are funded partially by revenue from the margin of the academic health center. So, making sure that the hospital system was successful was critical to resourcing the medical school and the other health science schools. So, I have a lot of experience with that. Most recently, I was the chair of the Michigan Health Board, and you may know that we've done all kinds of things in terms of digital technologies, precision medicine, innovative therapies. And I know that finding the right senior vice president or executive vice president of health affairs is critical. We have great leadership here at the University of Florida, and the selection of that person is going to be a pivotal decision for the future, not only of the health center, but also of the university, because of the support of the six schools and the role of that individual. So, I'm very, very up to date with the challenges. I can't wait to work with you, I can't wait to work with the president of the different systems. There's a board that's been around for, I think, a little bit over a year or something like that, I hope to be very engaged in that, to contribute to it, really roll up my sleeves and add value to it. The rise in the reputation of UF Health is exceptional. The importance of Scripps and UF Innovate is incredibly important, and I really think I have a lot I can bring, because I've been doing it for quite some time.
Question. Trustee Ridley. Dr. Drucker, all of us in this room appreciated your reference to the championships won by the athletic, athletics and the Gator Nation. I'd be interested to know what you would do as UF president to support the continued winning of championships here at the University of Florida, particularly in the light of the changing landscaping, changing landscape in college athletics.
Thank you so much. You yourself was, you were an athlete here, right, in the golf team?
Some people call golf athletics, not everyone.
So, I'm a little bit of an unusual guy in that although I'm an immunologist and I play cello, I'm an incredible fan of Division One sports. And, you know, a lot of people have been following, you know, my involvement at different schools. I'd say it first began, not at Emory, because it's the D3 school, and that's important too, but I was, first got really involved in interclusion sports at the University of Cincinnati. You might know that they've had a pretty good football team over the years, even making the CFP playoffs, and there was a game, I remember, Bearcats actually played a sugarball against Florida and lost, you know, there's a guy called Tim Tebow, that was the quarterback here. And so, as you can see, I really follow those sports. I think they knit the university community together. You know, the fans, the Gator fans are going to get to know me, because I go to the games and I try to interact with them. And so, it's really important to me, is what I'm trying to say. And I've been working on it for a long time, been involved in conference realignment, used to be the Big East for Cincinnati, then it became the American Athletic Conference, it became the Big Twelve. So, if you look, it's not too hard to find everything I've done directly as a president to make sure that the teams at the University I lead can compete at the highest level. The athletes deserve that, they deserve a president who cares and knows enough about the evolving, shifting landscape to position them to be successful. And some of that has to do with just showing up and being there for them, for them to know you care about them. But some of it really has to do with the business side of sports, which is considerable, and it's changed remarkably since I started at Cincinnati. Some of the biggest changes involve name, image, and likeness, and the settlements that have occurred, these are changing real-time. I've talked to the AD here, he and I are following it pretty closely, as I did with my athletic director at Michigan Board Manual. So, I know that's important, there's a lot of financial stress in having enough of a budget to support athletes of the highest caliber. So, I would be supportive of the athletic director with respect to that. And obviously, I was on the commission of presidents and chancellors of the Big Ten, was involved in thinking about TV deals, and thinking about the economics of how to sustain support at the highest level. So, I'm very, very up to speed with things like private equity and that potential role as a solution, and also the impact of travel on athletes and the transfer portal. So, I'm very, very up to speed with that and the NCAA. And as the president of University of Florida, you're going to get somebody who cares, the coaches are going to know that I care, the players are going to know that I care, fans are going to know I care, and I'm going to put time and energy to ensure that the Gators can compete at the highest level and bring home a fourth national championship in basketball and football. That's what I hope.
Thank you. Oh, oh, God. Did we get that commitment? All right. I like, that was the problem. Trustee Zilipski, I see your hand.
Stop right there, but Dr. Odo, UF is developing a campus in downtown Jacksonville to offer advanced workforce-oriented graduate professional degree program.
My role as student body president, how do you plan to ensure that UF continues to provide an exceptional student experience, both in and outside of the classroom?
I'd say it's one of the most important responsibilities of a president. I talked about the importance of supporting the faculty, I talked about the importance of affordability, that the Florida system is number one in terms of affordability. That's a, that takes work, makes making that a priority. But beyond economics, which is really, really important, I'm impressed with what this board and the state university system are investing in enhancing the student experience. That's why universities exist, is to educate the next generation. You're our future leaders, you're the future governor, I don't know of you, but one of you. And so, we, and we want people, while they're students and after they graduate, to be proud and connected to this great institution. Part of that is sports, but part of it is what happens inside a classroom, what happens outside. And I've taken a look at what's happening here at UF, it's first rate. And so, I want to work with our vice president of students, I want to work with our deans and student leaders as well, to think about what new opportunities might exist. For example, with study abroad, I talked a little bit about strategic partnerships, right? So, we need to know, where do students want to go? You know, are there enough opportunities? How can we augment that in terms of that aspect of a co-curricular experience? With respect to what we call maybe work-integrated learning, or co-op, or experiential learning opportunities? The question I would have is, does that exist equally for students in each of the different colleges? Does it exist more for engineering? Is there an opportunity to provide those sorts of opportunities, co-curricular opportunities, for students in the arts, for example, or in music? I've been involved in those sorts of things. You know, University of Michigan has something called Arts Co-ops as.
Fairly recently adopted post-tenure review for our tenured faculty to be reviewed every five years, to focus on accountability and make sure that everybody's remaining productive. I wanted to get your thoughts on post-tenure review, and specifically, how University of Florida can utilize that for its benefit.
Yeah, as I said to Chair Hosseini, I think that it is a very important mechanism, and I'm happy that it exists at the University of Florida. I think it's really important that the metrics that are used to assess faculty, because they play multiple roles that contribute to the institution, is important. I think it's important to have conversations with the provosts and the deans as it evolves. It almost certainly evolves, as everything does at an institution. But I think it's a very, very important step. It, you know, the investment that the state of Florida is making in UF, as I said, is double or triple of what other states are making. And we therefore have a fiduciary responsibility to ensure that our faculty are supported, that they're rewarded for exceptional performance, that if they are underperforming, that we point that out, give them a chance to perform at a higher level. And if they're not performing at all, that's actually a drag on the reputation of this great institution. So, I'm supportive of it. I think it's important to have conversations with faculty and the provosts and the deans about it as it moves forward. I think the way it's rolled out here, from looking at the data, it shows that the vast majority of faculty here are exceptional and outstanding, as you'd expect in a place like University of Florida. So, I would be personally committed to continuing that initiative.
Just to follow up, so you're, you are committed to post- Just to follow up, you so you're you are committed to to post-tenure review and the accountability that that entails?
Hundred percent. Thank you.
Uh I'm I'm bottom line, um let's not beat around the um. It's very clear on the post-hand review that and and this is a direct process that at the end of the day, it um yeah, it goes to the provost, you know? That the people that do not meet the standards of University of Florida uh of Florida, that that um they haven't been beneficial to university. I want to make sure uh we follow the law that um we ask those um um and and those faculty uh to leave. Bottom line, um are you willing? I'm I want to make sure, Mr. President, that what the law says, uh we all will follow.
Like I said, I will always follow the law, number one. Number two, I've been a faculty member at Johns Hopkins University and Harvard University, which essentially has a pretty tough, soft-money kind of situation. My salary, my benefits, every test tube, every student, I paid for by myself. And if I wasn't competing, wasn't bringing in grant money, every year they would cut my pay until I could not longer, no longer be a faculty member. So it's it's tough. It's a high, it's a high uh rope walk, if you will. But yes, I will follow the law and I'll follow the policies of the University of Florida.
We pay for performance, basically. Okay, all right, got it. Any other questions? Uh we're getting about uh the time is getting there. I'm going to ask you, uh Dr. Ono, one last question. UF has made dramatic moves in the U S News and World Report uh ranking in the past ten years. Can you tell us your view on rankings? And whether being a top-five university should be one of UF's goal?
I think that uh uh paying attention to rankings and having ranking strategies is very important for a variety of reasons. It's not just for the sake of looking at rankings. It's that it's an objective mechanism to look at performance, to hold the institution itself and its leadership accountable. Um and if you look at the different kinds of rankings, let's say, U S News, it's looking at student success. It's looking at investments in faculty. It's looking at student ratios. It's looking at reputation. Um and those are all things we should care about. Uh the reputation of the University of Florida impacts the value of its diploma on the wall. Um we owe it to our students to ensure that the University of Florida degree is always held in esteem. Uh the part of the worth has to do with uh its reputation, not only nationally, but also globally. That will be part of my responsibility. So to answer your question, yes, uh I support that. I think it's been part of the driver of the success of UF is that it's something that the institution has a laser focus on. I think that there are other rankings also that uh we need to look at. We need to look at rankings of graduate programs. Are they going in the right direction? And we need to continue to look at how we're doing in terms of technology transfer and commercialization. University of Florida is number two in the country. We want to keep it there. And the only way you know that you're keeping it there is if you look at it every single year. So one of the things I instituted at the University of Michigan is something called Day-to-Day, where we have a large forum and we look at school by school, department, department. How are we doing? Are we trending up? Are we trending down? Or are we just staying uh uh at the same place at the status quo? And Chair Hosseini, I want to say that I'm very, very happy in our conversations to know that there's a team that looks at that. And we should share it and uh with the community. So everybody understands um the data. Everybody understands and converges on a strategy to ensure that the ranking, the reputation, the value, the esteem of the university continues to rise.
Um the um you brought something really important, tech transfer. You know, uh from bench to bed, right? Um yes, you're right. Uh we're number two. We're number two after Carnegie Mellon, both in public and private. University of Florida is number two in the country to actually create things. You know, you can have patent, but if you don't have it to be practiced or used, doesn't do it. But we are number two in the country in a tech transfer that, you know, this is one thing that we are we are, we're so uh uh proud of it. You know, Carnegie Mellon is doing an incredible job. Hopefully, we can beat him and be a number one. We always like to be a number one in everything we can put our hands on. So any other uh board members, um it's been a um a great productive conversation. It really has. Uh I want to thank you um for your insightful, for your question and to Dr. Ono for your candid and thoughtful answers. It is clear to me that you have a deep understanding of all aspects of higher education, have learned a lot from your impressive experience as a student, faculty member, administrator, and in other leadership roles. Have a passion for the critical work that universities must do. Have a deep compassion for those who collaborate with you in that work and have a firm grasp on what we are trying to accomplish in the state of Florida and at UF and are aligned with those goals. As I said at the outset today, when I asked the search committee to find someone who can take this great university to the next level, I presented them with a challenging task. However, I am happy to say that I firmly believe they deliver. Would anyone like to make any comment before I ask for a motion?
Yes, sir. So over the past few weeks, much of the public focus around this search has centered around ideology. And that's important. As Chair of the Search Committee, I want to be very clear. I would not have invited Dr. Ono to meet with the Search Committee or this board if I had any doubt where he now stands on the key issues that matter to this board, to the Board of Governors, and to the state of Floridas, Florida. Yes, his views on some of these issues have evolved. The key is how they have evolved and why. As you've heard today, in Dr. Ono's case, that evolution was grounded in experience. I asked him direct questions around these issues during the search process. He gave me clear and principled answers. And just as importantly, he has done the same today through his prepared statement and to the and through the responses to, through his responses to the questions that you have asked. I believe he is fully aligned with Florida's values and vision for higher education. But I also want to focus on something that hasn't received as much attention in the public discourse, and that's experience. Running a university like the University of Florida isn't a theoretical exercise. It takes real, proven executive leadership. And in Dr. Ono, we have someone who has successfully led three major research un- three major research universities, including one of the most complex public universities in North America. He understands governance. He understands how to manage a large integrated health system. He understands how to navigate complexity. He's not learning on the job. He has done the job at a scale and under pressure. And he's done it while staying focused on students, research, and institutional mission. Those are skills we need now. The fact that someone with Dr. Ono's level of experience, his global academic reputation, and his alignment with our state's higher education priorities has chosen to come to Florida, that says something about the strength of this institution and the credibility of the reforms this state has put in place. There are very few people in the country who have both the conviction to lead this university in the direction Florida has set and the operation ability to actually deliver on that vision. Dr. Ono is one of them, and I'm proud to support his appointment as the fourteenth president of the University of Florida.
Well said. Um any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Chairman, I I just make a comment. I, you know, this has um been a very informative process and and I've heard from many stakeholders, many, many stakeholders. And and I've heard legitimate concerns that were questions that were asked and and concerns that were raised. I believe that the the explanations that I got, the answers that I got, I felt like they were truthful and and heartfelt. I I think uh Dr. Ono has the ability to be a a transformational leader for University of Florida. And uh I'm 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 satisfied with the the answers to the questions that have been raised and just wanted to state that for the record. I I think we're, we can be in alignment on our vision for University of Florida.
Thank you. Other comment before I take a motion? Okay. So I'm now going to ask for a motion and we'll have interim general counsel Ryan Fuller present the subject of that motion.
Thank you, Chair Hosseini. The question for the board is whether it accepts the recommendation of the Search Committee to appoint Dr. Ono as the fourteenth president of the University of Florida, subject to Board of Governors' confirmation, and delegate to the board chair the authority to finalize Dr. Ono's contract consistent with the compensation range previously approved by this board.
Is there a motion? We have a motion by trustee Ridley, uh a second by uh trustee um Zalubski. Any discussion? Conversation? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. Um we look forward to work with you and we look forward to be with you at the Board of Governors um next week and uh for their conf- confirmation process. And and with that, uh we're going to go and do our our day job, which is uh uh which take care of a couple of other things that uh we need to do. Um and uh so with that, um we have uh two. We have a uh go back this way up. Okay, let's turn um to B two. Um I will have interim general counsel Fuller review the Board of Governors' request, update the annual foreign, you know? Well, how about we do this and then go, yeah, go back. Okay. Foreign influence report. We got too excited and we just kind of.
Sorry about that. Yeah, so I'll, I'm going to address the B BT two. Um it relates to an update of our annual foreign influence report. Uh the Board of Governors' regulations require universities to report on all grant programs agreements.